I will call this planning commission meeting to order at seven o'clock. And first up is going to be roll call.
Sarah Jones Graham.
Marty Markey.
Scott Jensen.
Bill Blaine.
Carlo Vernwald.
Rita Bernhard.
Okay, next up is approval of minutes from January 25th, 2024. Did anybody have any comments on the minutes?
I made one comment which I gave to Elizabeth and she's already, I think, made changes to that. Should I let you know what it is? Page three. It says, I don't care about if there's a way down, the owner applicant. Didn't really know what to say at this point. Adding that the structure is being built as a garage for his auto repair business, but he actually clarified that and it shows up. Two statements when I asked if it was an extension of his current business, he said it was a storage to keep his personal cars out of the weather. So we just simply said, make it a storage garage. It's not going to be used for business purposes, so it should be noted. Other than that, it looked good. See anything else?
Anybody else? All right, then I would entertain a motion.
We had made the motion to approve with change.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes as amended. Does anybody have any discussion on this point? Seeing none, I will call for the question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? All right. Fast. Next is citizen input. And this is for public input for any item not on the agenda. Do we have anybody wishing to address the planning commission today? Okay. Then we are on to new business. Docket CPTA 1-23. The city of Scapus proposes land use amendments of the following proposed actions. Removes parks and recreation from the inventory section. Please note that the city will be removing individual inventories from the comprehensive plan with each applicable new amendment moving forward in order to streamline the comprehensive plan and to keep it more up to date. The inventories would then reside within each applicable master plan. Replaces the existing parks, trails, and open space goals and policies. Adds the 2024 Scapus Parks, Trails, and Open Space Plan as Appendix K. This is a legislative land use decision. And purpose is to take testimony, either written or oral regarding the proposed amendments. The planning commission will make a recommendation to the city council and the city council may approve proof of modifications or deny the proposed amendments following the public hearing. Do we have any written comments?
We did not receive any comments.
Okay. All right, then I am going to open the hearing. I am calling this public hearing to order to consider an application for a legislative land use decision. Testimony and evidence must address the criteria that apply to the decision as described in the staff report or to the criteria the person testifying believes to apply to the decision. Persons may speak only after being recognized by the chair and must come forward to the microphone and state their name and city for the record. Only testimony that is relevant to the application will be considered. Failure to raise and clarify an issue affords all parties to afford all parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on this issue. The order of the hearing will be the staff report, then the applicant's presentation, then other proponents, then opponents, then rebuttal by the applicant, then a staff response. Thereafter, the hearing will be closed for consideration of the matter by the commission. All right. Take it away.
Great, thank you. Good evening commissioners. Thank you all for being here tonight. We do appreciate it. So my presentation tonight will be a little different than usual because this is a legislative land use hearing. So your role will be to make a recommendation to city council on the adoption of the Parks Master Plan and Comp Plan amendments instead of, you know, a typical review of a proposed development project. So for that reason, I'll provide sort of a brief opening statement, then staff's recommendation, and then I'll point out the applicable approval criteria and where the findings can be found within the report. Once I've covered that, we do have Darcy Ruzinski with MIG and she was a city's consultant who helped us put the plan together. She is joining us virtually tonight and she'll provide a presentation on the plan once I complete my section. We also have Dave Sukow, the city's Public Works Director, joining us virtually as well in case you have any just general parks questions. All right, so the last Parks Master Plan was adopted in July of 2017. Since then, there have been a number of changes that prompted the city to update the Parks Master Plan sooner rather than later. Some of those changes include acquisition of additional parkland, an increase in the number of people using city parks, the aging of existing park amenities, and then just new emerging community priorities around parks. So one of the items that's going to be really helpful to council and staff as they decide how to prioritize projects with our limited budget is the decision-making criteria. You can see this on page 82 of the packet. The criteria outlines a series of considerations to keep in mind when deciding which projects to fund. And the criteria function as sort of a two-step filter. So the first filter is to look at how a potential park project advances the goals of the park system. And specifically, the goals mentioned in this first filter relate to goals that are being proposed for adoption tonight as six of the Comp Plan goals. And again, the proposed amendments to the comprehensive plan goals and policies and all the amendments are in Exhibit 2 to the staff report. The second filter asks, does the project advance the stated goals of the community and the city council? So there were seven community and council goals that were developed through a robust community engagement process. That included a community-wide online survey, an interactive event at the annual town meeting, several pop-up events, also through work sessions with council and planning commission, and from input from the Parks and Rec Committee who served as the advisory committee for the plan's development. The 2024 Parks, Parks, Trails, and Open Space Plan will be the Parks and Recreation element of the city's comprehensive plan. It prepares Scapus to address parks and recreation needs within the urban growth boundary over the next 20-year horizon. Though, as I mentioned, we didn't receive any public comments on this proposal. Staff does recommend that the planning commission recommend approval to council of CPTA 1-23 pertaining to the adoption of the 2024 Parks, Trails, and Open Space Plan and the associated comprehensive plan text amendments as presented. The criteria related to amendments to the comprehensive plan are contained within Chapter 17.22 of the Development Code and the findings are on pages seven through eight. The procedures for legislative land use decisions are contained in Chapter 17.160 and those findings are on pages eight through nine. The applicable statewide planning goals are on pages nine through 10. The applicable Oregon revised statutes and findings are on pages 10 through 12. The applicable Oregon administrative rules findings are on pages 13 through 14. And the applicable goals and policies from the comprehensive plan are on page 14. Although, we are proposing to replace all of the existing goals and policies that are in the current comprehensive plan. However, most all of the previous goals and policies are being carried forward with a few exceptions. And there is a crosswalk that's really helpful. It is on page 137. It starts on page 137 of the plan. And it just walks through all of the existing goals and how they relate and carry forward into the new goals. So that was a very helpful component that was included in the plan. That concludes just my brief overview, but we do have Darcy here, as I mentioned, to provide you with a PowerPoint presentation to go over kind of what went into the creation of the plan. Did you have any questions for staff at this time, or would you be ready for Darcy to present?
I don't have any questions.
Okay.
So I think.
All right, take it away.
Presentation.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
Yep, we can hear you.
Fantastic. I have two screens, but lots of buttons. And yeah, I can become a little bit disoriented. I am working from my home office tonight in Portland. As Lori said, my name is Darcy Ruzinski. I'm with the firm MIT. We're an urban design and urban planning firm. I'm going to make sure I start my slideshow so that I don't forget. There we go. And I led kind of a team of consultants, actually, out of the Portland office. And that included urban designers and urban planners and parks designers, sorry, and parks planners. So I'm here as the figurehead and someone who's very familiar with the process and I'll try to answer any questions that I can tonight. At the end of the presentation is probably going to be best, just so I can blow my screen back up and see your faces a little bit better after the presentation. It's a short presentation and if you participated in the December planning session, work session with city council, these slides will look very familiar to you. So I won't take too much of your time so we can have more opportunities for questions. So as Lori mentioned, some of the reasons why the city undertook this update at this particular time, these are a few of the project objectives. Again, wanted to make sure that you had an updated plan that reflected current conditions. You know, there's a lot of things have changed since 2017 in your community and especially the parks system. That includes new parks, properties, Commerce Drive, Grabhorn. We wanted to make sure the plan considered areas that are planned for growth, coinciding with your 50-year planning process, make sure these things were coordinated. And then, very importantly, updating the capital improvement plan and developing a strategy for making future decisions as Lori mentioned as well. So this was the process. We just broke it up into phases, into chunks. The first four phases, really, most of the work took place in about a year's time. So not a very lengthy process. It started with an inventory and analysis of existing conditions and some, you know, a kind of a look at what your strengths and weaknesses is kind of, I don't like to use that word, but maybe some challenges in your park system. The second phase really was focused very heavily on hearing from the community. What citizens and people who use the park systems, the trail systems, you know, how they felt about the system, what they really valued, cherished, what they wanted more of. So that kind of characterized the second phase. The third phase was developing those goals and objectives that ultimately became recommended recommended for your comprehensive plan update park section. And then Phase 4 was the action plan, again, getting into the dollars and cents of it and coming up with a strategy for moving improvements forward. So we're on Phase 5, Adoption. So Lori again covered that very nicely, so we don't have to spend much more time on that. Not going to spend too much time either on your existing conditions, you know, that that analysis of kind of where you're at today. That's really the first couple chapters of your plan are the draft plan. What we will get into the needs assessment a little bit deeper because it's really the methodology of assessing a park system. So these are some of the tools that we use to analyze the adequacy of your system. Strengths, weaknesses, and challenges, again, we walked, we walked the park sites with Dave, the parks, our parks designer and the director of Parks Recreation for MIT and myself and to really get a sense of, you know, what the parks amenities and facilities looked like, what was on the ground currently and really kind of looking creatively of what could be in those spaces as well, what improvements could could be appropriate for your community. The 10-minute walk metric, that gap analysis, that's really an industry standard just to identify areas that are easy to access within about a half a mile. And identifying some areas, again, where you don't, where you're underparked, as they say, where you don't have very many opportunities to enjoy open space or recreational facilities. The level of service measurement, again, is just a measurement of sufficiency of the amount of land that a community has and it's in terms of acres per 1,000 residents. And we heard from staff and the community that you really wanted to set a more ambitious target than the one that you currently have in your in your parks plan, but to make sure that it was reflective of the desired system, but also supportable, that you could actually achieve that that amount of park, develop parkland. And then community feedback, of course, that that was the most telling and really was the most influential on developing this parks plan. As Lori mentioned, the pop-up events, these were just opportunities to kind of show some, some boards and ask some questions. The questions that really mirrored the more in-depth online survey that was put up and available for several weeks. Those events were supported by the Parks and Recreation Committee, which was great. So again, we heard kind of directly and that committee got to hear directly from the community. Let's see, what's not on this slide but is in your appendix to your parks plan. Appendix B has a summary of the public outreach, the public input. Our series of stakeholder, well, we called them stakeholder, but really they were small group or individual interviews with over a dozen people who had, either were park users, county representatives, represented youth sports, or had an interest in, you know, specific activities. So we got a little more concentrated discussion with folks that were very familiar with the park system. And we got to understand better what was really great about Scapus' system as well as, you know, again, what what folks thought could use more of. And from that, you know, we started kind of seeing that there were some some themes coming to the fore. I think more than anything, you know, there were so many people that we talked to or that we heard from that viewed nature as just an enormous asset for your community. Again, sort of what you call maybe passive recreational opportunities through the trails and the nature, natural areas. And then where, you know, really there was a deficit of 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 things was in the youth activity. So places for youth, activities for youth definitely were something that folks thought Scapus could use some more of. So the recommendations. And we're taught, we came forward with this set of vision and goals, as Lori mentioned, these these weren't really a continuity from your existing. So it's not that we scrapped your old ones. They're perfectly good goals and policies from your current plan. But we elaborated on, we updated, kind of based on things that we were hearing, things that have become more important in your community and developed an updated set of goals and policies. And even beyond that, some action items, right? So if you if you have these aspirations, how do you get there? So we have quite a few action items into each of the goals and related policies. Let's see here. So the recommended park system, the updated park system now is Figure 4.2. There's a map that shows the updated system again with those new parks properties and, you know, bike park classification. The, you know, coming up with, let's see, how do I, how do I explain this? I had this in my head. So the, coming up, I guess, with the the recommendations was a subject of quite a few Parks and Recreation meetings, discussions with staff, discussions with planning commission and city council through a series of work sessions. So the kind of recommendations that were initially brought forward had been revised and updated and really calmed over to get to the point that that your plan is at today. Chapter 4 is where these, in the draft plan, is where these recommendations live. It's really organized by by park and there is a vision for each park that's articulated. So what is this park? What is it? What is it intended to do? What does it mean for our community? So that vision statement leads off a list of of desired amenities, some of which reflect what's currently there in the park and are just like, this is great. We want to enhance it. We want to maintain it. And some things are truly aspirational. They don't exist yet, but they do fit the the type of park it is. And, you know, those aspirational statements are are just that, some of which are not going to be accomplished in the near term and they may not actually be all accomplished in the the life of the plan. But they do give you some things to to point to that these are appropriate for this park. And when you are presented with future opportunities, perhaps grant opportunities or, you know, gifts from the community, what have you, you can, you can better judge whether or not that's appropriate based on these these aspirational statements for each of the parks. One thing that definitely drove some of the planning related to this updated Parks Plan was the Grabhorn property. It was, you know, clearly still a vacant site, but as the consultant team was brought on and, you know, kind of shown this opportunity, this kind of blank slate, if you will, and then looking at some of the the proposals for uses on that site, kind of going parallel as we were updating the Parks Plan. Another consultant was employed to, you kind of do the visioning and some preliminary plans for the Grabhorn property. We were looking at that system systematically and what an opportunity that was to really link together veterans and Chief Concomly and really make that triad of parks a real showcase and center of civic and recreational life for your community. So implementation, you know, now that we have described the system in in great depth, that we know, you know, what the community really aspires to, what the community would like to have, how how do you get that system that we've described? Well, there's a series of tools and that's really in the implementation chapter. We worked with staff to create a cost model to help update the capital improvement plan. This is just a slide to kind of show that it's it's meant to be, you know, a living, a living tool. But it it doesn't, you know, predict with specificity actual cost project or projected costs. But it did help lead us to a phased implementation plan. So the result of all that work really is summarized here. This is definitely a roll-up of a much more detailed, you know, piece of work. But from this slide, you can see that the strategy recommended in the plan is to, is really to focus on implementation, first on Grabhorn Park, because there's an opportunity for grant funding and, you know, taking advantage of that potential and using the purchase price of the land as a match for that grant. And that is time sensitive, so making that a short-term goal makes sense. And then you see other, other things come online a little bit later. Let's see, and Lori mentioned decision-making criteria and where that lives in the plan and in your packet. And again, just to provide some tools for the city to to make smart choices when you are, you know, faced with prioritizing quite a few projects. And not only that, you know, there are projects that are going to come up even. Again, that might be an opportunity through a development proposal or, you know, a community member, you know, wanting to gift property, for example, to the city partnerships with the county. You know, there, there are things that are unforeseen that may be, you know, really good opportunities for the community. And having some structure about how to make those decisions will be helpful and then, again, help you implement a system. So we have some information as well on funding sources. So the parks, you know, over the last 10 years or so averages about 13% of the general, general fund expenditures kind of as shown on this side. Really, you know, as you can see, the other demands on general fund budgets, parks just one of the things that really makes your community great. So it can't, if it, if it, that slice of the pie gets large for parks, for example, you can kind of see that there are other very important things that might have to shrink without finding additional funding to expand that circle to be a little bit larger, if you will. And the capital improvement plan, you can look at Appendix C. Again, this is just a, you know, a slice of of what we know. But the point really of this slide is that the total recommended improvements is is over 20 million. It's far more than the city has available to spend. So this figure shows that kind of roll-up. It shows how these projects are broken out into acquisition improvements and development of of new park properties. Another important point here is that as parkland comes online, as you improve and develop those acreages, the cost of operations also goes up then. So. I think finally, funding options. We do have, you know, some description of other funding options that the city doesn't currently have, but could be available. We have those kind of defined in Appendix D. Some things that the city can can review, revisit in the future. And yeah, just to kind of leave the the message that, you know, funding is going to be a really important factor in fully implementing the the system that's described in the plan. And it's going to, you know, your your complete park system is going to need both capital funding and ongoing operational funding, you know, just to keep your parks clean and safe and well-maintained and accessible for everyone. So with that, your recommendation will send the draft plan on to city council. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Darcy.
You're welcome.
Does anybody have any questions for Darcy?
Bill Blank here. So what I see is that in the planning, looking forward to pulling some things out as a, are available to the city to consider later down the road. Notice your footnote here on page six of 161. Kind of describes, I think, what you're going with directions if we approve this. Please note that the city will be removing individual inventories from the comprehensive plan with each of applicable new amendment moving forward. In order to streamline the comprehensive plan and to keep it more up to date, the inventories would then reside within each applicable master plan document. That's a pretty good summary of what we're trying to look at here if we approve this.
Well, that would pertain to the proposed amendments to the comprehensive plan. And so in the comprehensive plan, at the beginning of the document, there's an inventory section for each, you know, type of utility. And, you know, it'll say how many, like, you know, how many feet of water pipe in the city or, you know, just, or like for parks, it lists all the parks. And that was pulled from the previous parks master plan and put in the comp plan for the inventory section. And, you know, the thought now is, and a lot of cities are doing this, is to get away from having those inventories in there because they're constant, they're, they're instantly out of date the second you do another project. Yeah. And so the thought is to just let, let the inventory reside in each master plan. And that way, over time, as we get those taken out, the, the comp plan will be able to be kept up to date a little bit better.
Okay. There's a living document here.
I just wanted, I just wanted to ask about, it seems like a lot of the goals for additional parkland, the goals aren't being carried through. And it sounds like there's interest in the development of the new neighborhood parks, say. But I don't know where that falls in the goals because when I look at the, page 137, the representing of the existing planning goals, doesn't seem like those, says that those are kind of dropped. I'm just curious, where is, you know, the goals for additional parks?
Was there one in particular, Scott, that you were seeing was, was not carried forward?
Well, um, the, uh, page 137, first one under parks. Page 138, the first under access and connectivity.
First one under parks, a park in every neighborhood?
Yeah.
So that one was partially carried forward. And then what was the second one?
Page 138, under access and connectivity, the first one.
Yeah, and that was something that is not so much of a, and Darcy, you can speak to that one, that's related to a five-minute walk versus 10. I think 10 is kind of the accepted standard. And I think getting away from that five-minute walk was a recognition of the limitations of what budgeting the city does have available to it. But if you want to add anything, Darcy or, or Dave, about why that didn't, didn't carry forward or the other one?
Yeah, no, I think that that's correct, Lori, that the five versus 10 for sure. And I believe also that the city council had in their, their goals, something related to the accessibility. And I know, I believe that that's no longer the case. So I don't, I don't quite know the rationale behind that, but that language isn't in the city council's goals at the moment either, if I recall correctly. So it is, it is just one metrics. We do have more, I believe, accessibility language and the updated goals and policies. So having parks that are accessible to community members, this still remains important and comes through, I believe, and the, the recommended policy language. So that idea is not, has not lost for sure, but having a definitive metric has been, has not been carried forward.
I think the five-minute, the five-minute walk, park within the five-minute of everyone was specifically, if I believe, if I remember correctly, Mayor Burgess' personal desire to have that included. And I think that that is kind of how that came to be a council goal at one point too. But again, in recognition that 10 minutes is the standard, we, we went with that.
Okay.
A little bit unreasonable, some think that, you know, you could, five minutes walk, I mean, it depends so much on the area.
Right.
And the surrounding properties and it's almost an impossibility in every occasion.
Correct. And I think that's why we wanted, we wanted goals that were reflective of what we heard from the community and what, what is possible.
So I know that the neighborhood proposed parks, it's here on page 73.
I think the biggest thing is.
Or 55, whatever you want to look at.
I think the biggest thing is I didn't key on the difference between the five and the 10-minute walking distance.
Right?
Oh, uh-huh.
One thing I noticed is that in the budget, it just, it lists them, but it says to be determined locations, so it's, it's a plan and be developed at some point in time.
Right, exactly, exactly. Did we also have Dave on the line if there were any general questions?
Actually, I do have one. How large is the Keys Road Treatment Plant property?
Yeah, good evening, commissioners. I don't know off the top of my head, I want to say somewhere in the neighborhood of five acres total.
As I, you know, look at the, you know, kind of notional map, it seems to kind of put that neighborhood park just about in that spot. And I know that we're looking at increasing, building a lot, larger reservoir there. Would it hit, would it be possible to basically bury the reservoir and put a park on top? Like.
I think Dave can speak to that.
Yeah, no, that, that would not be an option due to elevations of the tanks that were required to do for operations of it, and it will stay within the confines of public security. So that, that site will remain fenced as is the, you've probably seen here shortly, the two existing smaller tanks will go away, the new one sits in its location. However, in regards to what you're referring to is Pocket Park has been discussed on that site many times. And what would likely be used would be the northwest corner of the property. There's a drive aisle that goes down into the facility that currently the neighbors use to run their dogs and things. We have kicked around, potentially doing something there with the caveat that if the treatment plant ever had to do expand or whatever, that it would go away to allow for that expansion.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
I live right down the street from there and we use it as a de facto public park.
Yeah, lot, lots of people do. I see dogs there quite frequently and things, but we have considered that, you know, and this master plan is going to help drive those decisions. That's, that's kind of what we intend to use this for here shortly is looking holistically, like where do we want to think about small amenity additions to the city to, to try to target that 10-minute walk? So you're on the right path, we're thinking with you the same thing, we just haven't got to the stage of implementation yet.
Thank you. Does anyone have any other questions? Seeing none. I guess the next step would be applicants present their case. I mean.
We did that.
Done that. So any proponents, we have nobody in the audience, so also no opponents. Would you like to rebut the nothing said?
I think you should approve.
I'm, I'm assuming no staff response to the lack of comments?
Uh, no, no staff response.
All right. And we've done questions, so I will close the hearing for deliberations. All right. Thoughts?
This, we're just making a recommendation to the city council.
Right.
Yeah. I don't have any.
Okay.
Pretty well covered, all of the issues are in this report.
Okay. Seems that perhaps debate is finished, then I will accept a motion. Yeah, well, I don't get to say the motions, so.
So since we have this, we're going to move that the planning commission recommend approval of the application to city council as presented and adopt the findings in CPTA 1-23, Planning Commission Staff Report dated February the first, 2024.
I'll second.
There's a second on that.
All right, it has been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, recommendation made. That is, okay, we're on to communications, calendar check. All right, looks like the next thing on here is February 15th, Economic Development Committee meeting at noon, and then a Parks and Rec Committee meeting at six. City offices will be closed for President's Day, February 19th. February 20th, the Urban Renewal Agency meets at six, and then the city council meeting follows at seven. No Planning Commission on February 22nd. There is the appreciation dinner on February 28th from six to eight. Make sure to get your RSVPs in, Liz.
Just make a note here that the Urban Renewal Agency meeting was switched from the 5th to the 20th, whatever it was, you changed that, so.
On the website?
Yeah.
I think it got changed on the.
I know it got changed.
Okay, good, yeah.
Just saying that. It's reflected in this change.
All right, then we move into March, Monday, March 4, council work session at six, followed by a council meeting at seven. Thursday, March 14, Planning Commission meeting at seven.
Yeah, that will be for a site development review of the RE/MAX, Leah Chitwood's RE/MAX office. It's the conversion of a residential to a commercial use.
Okay. Monday, the 18th of March, council work session at six, city council at seven. Thursday, March 21st, Economic Development Committee at noon, Parks and Rec Committee at six, and then Planning Commission meeting at 7:00 PM on March 28th.
That is a question we should know in about a week if that's going to happen or not. If it does, it's expected to be the Keys Water Reservoir approval.
All right. And that's everything I have on the calendar. I think we're a little early for your annual announcements, Bill, right?
Yeah, a couple months to go here.
All right.
It'll be in May.
Any commissioner comments? Good job, staff.
It's a lot of work to get this all done.
Yeah.
This stage, city council has to go through it.
Yep. And there's been work sessions along the way, so they're, they're, they know what's going on.
Okay, staff comments?
Yeah, I don't have anything, you know, my laundry list prepared for you tonight like I did last time. However, I did want to point out that the March 18th work session at 6:00 PM is on, let me just verify, is the 50-year plan? And so that's a joint work session with Planning Commission and Council.
What date?
That one's on here, it's March 18th. That, that council work session at six is joint, a joint work session. And we'll be looking at more proposed development code amendments at that meeting. So that, that plan is moving forward now, we can see the light at the end of the tunnel. We are finishing up the comp plan, well, I think all the comp plan amendments are pretty much set now, we're just looking at the development code amendments. And then we are still looking at the urban growth boundary expansion sub-area analysis. So you have to look at, there's 21 sub-areas we're studying in terms of, you know, the ease of providing services, water, sewer, streets. And then there's some other analysis that we will enter into after that. So just still working through that and we'll have a few more joint work sessions. There'll be, there'll be three in total between now and May. One more stakeholder advisory committee meeting, maybe two, we go to adoption. The next stakeholder advisory committee meeting is April 9th, so lots coming up on that and moving towards adoption this fall.
All right. NJ, Liz, anything? All right, well, with that, we'll adjourn the meeting at 7:47. Thank you for being here, everybody.
Thank you.